I'm good tomorrow.
Yeah, we're doing schoolwork. We should not have to stay in the office.
Yeah, I'll mind becoming uncomfortable if they do.
I don't know.
It's a lot.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily help with sketching. You can certainly play that side.
But you're right.
We've got to set a starting point.
I like that.
I mean, I like y'all.
I do.
Monday, Monday.
You're right.
It's a lot.
You felt something today?
Felt something.
I've had a horrible day, so if you see me in the back, you sit down.
I woke up with water on my floor.
Really? Oh, wow.
And Google was looking like.
You need to want to share, and then I get you back.
You're sharing that.
I'm just going to go through.
Oh, I see. Because I.
I'd call a meeting to order.
All right, Mr. Fogelman, would you like to go ahead there with our health and wellness RFP, please?
He's got it.
So we're going to talk a little bit about one of the projects that we've been working on as part of Future Ready 2023. Brent's going to assist me with that. It's kind of been a joint effort. It'll fall under great teachers and great leaders, and it really starts to address, you know, kind of our recruitment, our retention strategies, and providing competitive total rewards. If you remember back in January when I did an update on Future Ready 2023, one of the things that we, you know, were looking at for future was the potential to look at some clinics similar to what Hamilton County uses. So.
So the timeline for the process started, well, discussion started before this, but on November 21st, 2018, we issued the RFP for health and wellness, and we did the sealed bid opening on January 8th. We did have nine vendors respond, and once we get all the responses and do some evaluation, we requested additional information from all vendors to help the evaluation committee. You can see the evaluation committee started meeting in February, and that team consists of individuals from our risk management team, human resources, finance, and we also have a member from Hamilton County Education Association. Missing by? So we are finalizing those meetings, and we will have a recommendation in May. The major components of the RFP that were used for the scoring criteria include onsite clinics, onsite pharmacy, wellness, and telemedicine, and those were the primary categories used for scoring the RFPs.
So just kind of talk a little bit about the programs and what we would be looking at in these, you know, each specific area. From the onsite clinics, first of all, it's really setting up clinics that would be responsible for just primary care services, immunizations, screenings, chronic care management. Through our telemedicine approach, we would have 24-hour call support and referral management to specific physicians. We'd have an onsite pharmacy, so we'd be having our own local pharmacy management, and they would help us with basically utilization management. One of the big components, let me step back just a second about the clinics. What we'd see those is probably two clinics, one on this side of the river and then one on the north side. Ultimately, a county our size or a district our size, we'd probably be looking somewhere around four to five. What we would be doing, you know, in each clinic, probably be staffed initially by one primary provider along with a technician, with the potential based on usage to move to two. We'd be looking at staggered hours. We'd look and be covering up into the evenings and also some Saturday coverage. From an employee wellness standpoint, this is a big, big, big area for a big opportunity. Maybe I should say it that way because when we kind of start looking at some of our insurance information, we do a yearly review with both Cigna and Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and we've got 46% of our members. That would include employees, independents, that have two or more high-risk factors. So what that means is it may be blood pressure, may be diabetes, may be, you know, cardiac issues, et cetera. So we've got 46% of our employees. So wellness is a big issue for, in this approach moving forward. One of the things we'd be looking at would be health, health risk, an annual health risk assessment, voluntary, but nevertheless, an opportunity for people to really start checking their numbers. You know, looking at a wellness portal, coaching, screening, and ultimately leading to programs to really encourage wellness for our employees. And then ultimately looking at a telemedicine program. You've probably seen the commercial on TV where the mother and the father have the baby doctor and, you know, and the doctor ends up treating both the baby and the father who's not fared well in the event. So really kind of that concept of being able to provide really 24-hour care for our employees and that they can have the opportunity to get some advice in the middle of the night if needed. So when we look at implementation, go ahead, Brent.
So as Keith mentioned earlier, we would be looking at two clinics, each with onsite pharmacies. Utilization is going to be critical for these clinics to be successful, and we foresee having low or no cost services at the clinics. That's still being evaluated, but it would depend on which, some services could be free, and there may be very small copays or something for other services. You're going to have a lower prescription cost with the onsite pharmacies, and funding for this would come from the self-insurance fund. So having a program like this in place would allow us to proactively manage our self-insurance risk at a level that we haven't been able to in the past because we don't have as much of the information to do that as we could have through a program like this. And it would put us in a position to potentially reduce future operating costs by having more control over our, the cost of providing health insurance to our employees. Of course, that assumes that healthcare cost increase at a rate that they have been over the past few years and not something more significant than that.
So when we looked at what would be some of our goals, and as we thought about this, employee wellness was at the very top of the list. We felt like that really gave us an opportunity to impact our workforce. Of course, obviously, we're interested in trying to save some, save some dollars or to avoid spending some dollars, and we think there's a real opportunity for cost avoidance. What we typically see is that we've done some research that really in years, two or three, you're starting to see a return on the investment. We see, when I say expanded employee benefit, as we think about reduced or no cost, really what our employees do is get a little more bang for their buck as they're looking at some of their prescriptions as well as some of their healthcare convenience. If we are able to stage these right, then we have the opportunity that, you know, we're not relying on emergency room visits or urgent care. They're actually using our facility, which is another way for us to help manage our cost. So the importance of setting up staggered hours, setting it up to, you know, on times that will be convenient for employees will be critical. And then ultimately, the healthy workplace benefits. I mean, we're talking our absenteeism reduction potential for, we think it will be a retention tool for us, probably even a recruitment tool. type of benefits. We looked at two particular case studies, one in our own backyard with Hamilton County as well as Sumner County Schools implemented a seminar. And there's, when we, when we were preparing for collaborative conferencing, doing some of the research, what we found is this is starting to become prominent among school systems. Oftentimes, when we'd be doing the research around salary and benefits, we would see schools, several school systems who had implemented this across the state of Tennessee. Using Sumner County, 4,300 employees, 49 schools, they established their clinics in 2016, and the very next year saw cost avoidance of $1.5 million. So that was about a 4.5% decrease in their spend. And this year, they were able to, or for 2018 rather, they were able to do a $2.7 million decrease in their spend. We also talked, spent quite a bit of time talking to Hamilton County. Some of my staff had an opportunity to visit their clinic, to tour it. Mayor Coppins is a big advocate of this clinic, feels like it's done a lot to help the county manage their health insurance cost. They established one clinic in 2013, implemented an onsite pharmacy, and they've saw an annual trend of 2.9% cost avoidance. So our plan is we still have some additional evaluation to do, but during May, we would be presenting a recommendation from that RFP. Any questions?
Dr. Highlander.
I want to applaud you guys for this. I mentioned it to Dr. Johnson when he first came on board. I mentioned it to his predecessor, have him talk to county government about what they've done and seen other systems. And, you know, I'm a little concerned about our initial startup cost, but other than that, it is a win-win. I mean, it's win for health, it's win for attendance, you know, and it's a positive benefit for the, for our employees. So thank you very much. I am a little concerned about the initial kickoff cost, but other than that.
And if I can speak to that, all the initial startup costs will be funded through our self-insurance fund. So we have, our fund is in a good place to do this at this point in time, so it would not be any different than, than starting up programs through Blue Cross or Cigna and funding out of that program. So I do think we are in a good position for that.
Ms. Hill.
I just, I want to make sure that I understand the way that the cost savings plays out. So these other county programs with Sumner and Hamilton, they've seen savings related to claims for medical and prescription drugs. How does that balance with the actual cost of the program itself?
So typically, what our, what we've seen in talking to other, talking to some of the vendors actually, is that the initial startup cost is usually recovered in two to three years, and then you start to see a return on investment. Sumner County actually, you know, kicked off in 2016 and actually saw a return on their investment 2017. So that potential exists. We've conservatively though, taken the approach, we'd be looking for, starting to see a return in two to three years.
Thank you.
And one other thing on that, Ms. Hill, to, if you think of it this way, so all claims that are being paid currently for our employees are paid out of our self-insurance fund. So the cost of the annual fees related to having these clinics and paying for those services, so if an employee goes to the clinic for free, you know, we're already paying for the service by having the clinic there, that payment per employee is going to be cheaper than the claims we're paying to external providers. So that's another way that you can start reducing costs in your self-insurance fund by paying less to our own provider than we would pay to external providers, if that makes sense.
I would just contextualize just a little bit from personal experience, been in a system where we had several clinics, we had one main clinic and several satellite clinics. First, you have to change behavior, so we have to get our employees, encourage our employees to begin to take advantage of this resource if the board so chose to implement this. From personal experience, I got to the point, being a user, where I went to the clinic first almost by nature, and it just was, I'd go three, four times before I went to a doctor because it was always easier to get in, and you create more flexibility with the hours. And over time, we got to a place within our insurance trust that we just always almost had an employee insurance premium holiday where they didn't have to pay for a month of insurance, but it was because they had been so intentional about going to the clinic. And really, wellness is the other component here that maybe we don't elevate as, we hadn't elevated as much, but the wellness initiatives that are there, I need to get involved with those too. But, but those wellness initiatives that really begin to change, are you shaking your head? That really changed behaviors for employees. So that's, that's really the ultimate desire is to change behavior so that you have the savings, but it was great from my experience.
I might just comment on the wellness. The last company I worked for, we had a really aggressive wellness program, and we, several, I'll call them testimonials, where people actually came in and got their screenings and was able to identify problems and actually go to the doctor. And, you know, I don't want to emphasize it too much, but in some cases saved lives because they were able to identify high blood pressure, cardiac issues that they were able to get resolved and get treatment quickly as a result of the screenings.
Mr. Smith.
This is great. I mean, you know, big companies like us, more and more going to this, great, good work. Couple of questions. Is this, those clinic staff by MDs or PAs?
Nurse practitioners or physician assistants in a heck. But they would have a medical director that was responsible for the facility.
Yeah, okay. That supervises them.
Right.
Do those professionals become our employees or do we contract for that, for that service?
They would be the, they'll be the employee of the clinic provider.
Okay, all right. And then one other question, it's kind of off-base, I guess, but would that be a place that our student athletes could get sports physicals?
We, one of the things when we looked at the RFP that we included is the capability to expand, to, you know, broaden the, right now, the focus would be on employees or members, so it could be employee families of, that would receive treatment at the clinics. Our telemedicine approach, what we saw that as the capability to really expand with, to our students or actually have kiosk in school. So that, that's a little longer range thinking, but we think that there's some capability to expand, but we need, we need to kick off first and get things going.
One thing I'll mention, one additional thing I'll mention on that, for the student athletes, a couple of things we could do though through the provider is we could ask the provider to make their, the nurse practitioners or physician assistants available, you know, on a couple of different Saturdays and just student, you know, some schools already do that with parents that are at the schools that are, that happen to be doctors. So that is something we could ask the provider to do is basically set up, you know, physical, sports physical days where they can just do as many people as can come through.
And I think we probably would have, I think if I recall, sometime last year, there was a vote around trainers, so, you know, there would have to be some court, obviously some coordination with that.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was going to say, I think that's part of our agreement with Erlanger right now, so I mean, obviously, we could revisit that, but you got anything? All right, Ms. Robinson.
I was just curious about our, our real estate for this, like, are we going to have to, are we going to either utilize some of the property that we currently own or will we have to like seek out a place for these clinics to be located? I was just wondering if that's an additional expense or would be, would we be able to tap into the buildings that we currently own that we're not utilizing?
So our best option would be tap into buildings that we currently own. You know, we've, you know, scouted out some potentials, but once we get a vendor awarded, then we would sit down and work out details on that.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious because I know that, you know, most of our properties are not built out for medical clinics, so I was just curious like, but I guess we would thumb that through the.
Yeah, and there's, almost all the proposals included, design of the clinic in, in the proposal. One thing we have discussed in the committee, and we want to be intentional about not putting clinics, clinics in open schools to start out with because if nothing else, access to the pharmacy in that building. So, you know, if that's something we can figure out down the road, we will, but we're, we would stay away from that with these first two clinics. And as Keith mentioned, we would utilize property we have if possible, but with that being said, location is critical for these to be utilized properly. So we want to make sure that whichever spot we pick on either side of the river is going to be used properly.
I've got one more questions about, question about how all this works. So I think our current plan options, like, or maybe like Humana, Blue Cross, I'm not sure. Cigna and Blue Cross. Cigna and Blue Cross. Okay, so you, like, employees would still have the option of those plans, correct? Okay. Does this also create like a reduction in their plan cost as well, or it's, this is a totally separate opportunity?
Yeah, I would say it's, it's so, every employee will still have a health insurance plan, whichever they choose, if they choose to have health insurance. The difference would be instead of going to CVS Minute Clinic or American Family Care, even their primary care physician and paying, you know, right now, we don't have, like, for the Blue Cross plan, for example, there's no copay. You pay up until you've hit the deductible. Instead of paying when you go to the doctor, you come to the clinic for free or for a set fee, you know, if it's maybe $10. So it's going to be cheaper out of pocket for each employee to go to the clinic. And for employees that do not have primary care physicians, this is a good opportunity for them to have a primary care physician that can start identifying health concerns. We wouldn't do anything with health insurance rates in association with this. You know, the goal would be for, to, because the health insurance, healthcare costs are continually on the rise. We want to avoid the increase in healthcare cost and avoid having to raise premiums in the future, and this is probably the best way to do that. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, we could, once we get to a point where it's successful, we could start looking at premium holidays.
Mrs. Lennon.
I have a question about the clinic from Hamilton County government that was established in 2013. And that's still successful and up and running?
Yes.
The one in 2013? I think that's great. The other thing that I just, I really like is one of the listening sessions that I attended with the, Dr. Johnson, is the teachers. I was at a table, and one of the things that they really talked about that they wanted to see was something for wellness and something like this. So thank you for your work on this because I think it addresses a need that the teachers brought forward at the listening session. They, you know, one of their struggles is finding time to go to doctor's appointment and wellness, and so thank you for all your hard work on this.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you. All right, so I guess we'll move on to the substitute teacher staffing.
So one of, one of the other activities that we've been involved with is really, as we kind of, as you all know, we had TNTP in earlier, I guess, last year now, last calendar year to look at some of our processes, and so we're, have taken a lot of feedback from them as well as our other things that we've, as we've identified areas, opportunities for improvement. And as we've begun to kind of think about how we could do our jobs better, we, one of the things that we've identified or that we're taking a look at is our substitute staffing. We think it fits in our great teachers and great leaders, Future Ready 2023. It also obviously affects our capability to accelerate student achievement. So our current status, what we're experiencing is, you know, the economy's good and, you know, we're experiencing a dwindling pool of applicants for our positions. Right now, we have a little, about 750, about, we have 753 active subs, and, you know, as we've done the research, we believe to really be effective, we ought to be somewhere in the 1,200 range. What, just to kind of give you a feel for what we've done this year, we've screened over 700 applicants to date, and, you know, we'll continue to screen right through the end of the school year into the summer in preparation for next year. We've interviewed over 250 applicants year-to-date, so, you know, we're getting about a third of those, of those candidates really, really kind of passed through muster. We've done seven sub-training sessions, and our average fill rate is about 80%. If, we've kind of done some benchmark work, and if we're really, you know, doing, if we were doing best practice, we'd be at a 90-plus percent fill rate. So when we look kind of what, what our current staffing, you say, or.
Initiatives that really begin to change. Are you shaking your head? That really changed behaviors for employees. So that's, that's really the ultimate desire is to change behavior so that you have the savings. But it was great from my experience.
I might just comment on the wellness. The last company I worked for, we had a really aggressive wellness program. And we, several, I'll call them testimonials where people actually came in and got their screenings and was able to identify problems and actually go to the doctor. And, and, you know, I don't want to emphasize it too much, but in some cases saved lives because they were able to identify high blood pressure, cardiac issues that they were able to get resolved and get treatment quickly as a result of the screenings.
Mr. Smith.
This is great. I mean, you know, big companies like us, more and more going to this, good work. Couple of questions. Is this, those clinic staff by MDs or PAs?
Nurse practitioners or physician assistants. And then a heck. But they would have a medical director that was responsible for the facility.
Yeah, okay. Supervises them. Do those professionals become our employees or do we, we contract for that, for that service?
They would be the, they'll be the employee of the clinic provider.
Okay, all right. And then one other question, it's kind of off base, I guess, but would that be a place that our student athletes could get sports physicals?
We, one of the things when we looked at the RFP that we included is the capability to expand, to, you know, broaden the, right now, the focus would be on employees or members, so it could be employee families of, that would receive treatment at the clinics. Our telemedicine approach, what we saw that as the capability to really expand with, to our students or actually have kiosk in school. So that, that's a little longer range thinking, but we think that there's some capability to expand. But we need, we need to kick off first and get things going.
One thing I'll mention, one additional thing I'll mention on that. For the student athletes, a couple of things we could do though through the provider is we could ask the provider to make their, the nurse practitioners or physician assistants available, you know, on a couple of different Saturdays and just student, you know, some schools already do that with parents that are at the schools that are, that happen to be doctors. So that is something we could ask the provider to do is basically set up, you know, physical, sports physical days where they can just do as many people as can come through.
And I think we probably would have, I think if I recall, sometime last year, there was a vote around trainers. So, you know, there would have to be some court, obviously some coordination with that.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I think that's part of our agreement with Erlanger right now. So I mean, obviously we could revisit that, but you got anything? All right, Ms. Robinson.
I was just curious about our, our real estate for this. Like, are we gonna have to, are we gonna either utilize some of the property that we currently own or will we have to like seek out a place for these clinics to be located? I was just wondering if that's an additional expense or would be, would we be able to tap into the buildings that we currently own that we're not utilizing?
So our best option would be tap into buildings that we currently own. You know, we've, you know, scouted out some potentials, but once we get a vendor awarded, then we would sit down and work out details on that.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious because I know that, you know, most of our properties are not built out for medical clinics. So I was curious like, but I guess we would sum that through the.
Yeah, and there's, almost all the proposals included, design of the clinic in, in the proposal. One thing we have discussed in the committee, and we, we want to be intentional about not putting clinics, clinics in open schools to start out with because if nothing else, access to the pharmacy in that building. So, you know, if that's something we can figure out down the road, we will, but we're, we would stay away from that with these first two clinics. And as Keith mentioned, we would utilize property we have if possible. But with that being said, location is critical for these to be utilized properly. So we want to make sure that whichever spot we pick on either side of the river is gonna be used properly.
I've got one more questions about, question about how all this works. So I think our current plan options, like maybe like Humana, Blue Cross, I'm not sure.
Signum and Blue Cross.
Signum and Blue Cross. Okay, so you, like employees would still have the option of those plans, correct? Okay. Does this also create like a reduction in their plan cost as well? Or it's, this is a totally separate opportunity?
Yeah, I would say it's, it's so, every employee will still have health insurance plan, whichever they choose, if they choose to have health insurance. The difference would be instead of going to CVS Minute Clinic or American Family Care, even their primary care physician and paying, you know, right now, we don't have, like for the Blue Cross plan, for example, there's no co-pay. You pay up until you've hit the deductible. Instead of paying when you go to the doctor, you come to the clinic for free or for a set fee, you know, if it's maybe $10. So it's gonna be cheaper out of pocket for each employee to go to the clinic. And for employees that do not have primary care physicians, this is a good opportunity for them to have a primary care physician that can start identifying health concerns. We wouldn't do anything with health insurance rates in association with this. You know, the goal would be for, to, because the health insurance, healthcare costs are continually on the rise. We want to avoid the increase in healthcare cost and avoid having to raise premiums in the future. And this is probably the best way to do that. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, we could, once we get to a point where it's successful, we could start looking at premium holidays.
Mrs. Lennon.
I have a question about the clinic from Hamilton County government that was established in 2013. And that's still successful and up and running?
Yes.
The one in 2013?
It is.
I think that's great. The other thing that I just, I really like is one of the listening sessions that I attended with the, Dr. Johnson is the teachers. I was at a table and one of the things that they really talked about that they wanted to see was something for wellness and something like this. So thank you for your work on this because I think it addresses a need that the teachers brought forward at the listening session. They, you know, one of their struggles is finding time to go to doctor's appointment and wellness. And so thank you for all your hard work on this.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you. All right, so I guess we'll move on to the substitute teacher staffing.
So one of, one of the other activities that we've been involved with is really, as we kind of, as you all know, we had TNTP in earlier, I guess, last year now, last calendar year to look at some of our processes. And so we're, have taken a lot of feedback from them as well as our other things that we've, as we've identified areas, opportunities for improvement. And as we've begun to kind of think about how we could do our jobs better, we, one of the things that we've identified or that we're taking a look at is our substitute staffing. We think it fits in our great teachers and great leaders, future ready 2023. It also obviously affects our capability to accelerate student achievement. So our current status, what we're experiencing is, you know, the economy's good and, you know, we're experiencing a dwindling pool of applicants for our positions. Right now, we have a little, about 750, about, we have 753 active subs. And, you know, as we've done the research, we believe to really be effective, we ought to be somewhere in the 1,200 range. What, just to kind of give you a feel for what we've done this year, we've screened over 700 applicants to date. And, you know, we'll continue to screen right through the end of the school year into the summer in preparation for next year. We've interviewed over 250 applicants year to date. So, you know, we're getting about a third of those, of those candidates really, really kind of passed through muster. We've done seven sub-training sessions and our average fill rate is about 80%. If, we've kind of done some benchmark work and if we were really, you know, doing, if we were doing best practice, we'd be at a 90-plus percent fill rate. So when we look kind of what, what our current staffing, you can say our work chart as it relates, just as it relates to our sub-staffing, we've got these physicians report to Angela. We have a HR generalist. Her primary function is just really staffing. So she's the one that did screenings and the interviews in addition to other activities that she's involved with. This is probably maybe 80% of her work activity. She's also filled in and helped us with some of our licensure issues over the past few months and kind of a, a go-to person for us. And then on a daily basis, we have two gentlemen that work with us in our subplacement office. They're part-time employees and they come in, in the morning early and really they're responsible for getting subs out into our schools. So when we look at our current staffing, as we currently stand, we really don't have the capability for recruitment. Our recruitment staff is primarily focused on our certified, you know, now, as a result, oftentimes we will identify opportunities for people who might not quite be ready to step into one of our certified roles and they'll, they'll get referred into, to our sub-staffing organization. We also, as we're currently staffed, really don't have the capability for some of the proactive staffing and training solutions. As we've talked, looked at the different options, we've kind of learned some lessons about things that we could do better. But really looking at some of the things like managing our utilization, the analytics around our utilization, how we could take that analytics and basically be more proactive in some of our staffing. We really need to probably move to some online training as well as professional development for subs beyond their initial training that we provide them. When we look at our day-to-day administration, we're a little more reactive than we are proactive. And our goal is to try to get as many substitutes in vacancies, teaching vacancies as possible. So that's our primary focus. What we'd really like to be able to do is ultimately be able to address some of the issues, long-term planning. We know there's some high absentee days and being able to kind of do some long-range planning around those days as well as look at some of the analytics that would help us address that long-range planning. When we thought about ways that we could go forth and address some of the issues, we've kind of come up on two options. Our first one would be we could restructure and add some additional staff from an HR standpoint. What that would lead us to do is really restructure our programs. We would focus on recruiting, change the way, we really don't recruit. We rely on posting our jobs on search soft, but we would be more involved in actually out recruiting, recruiting events that were targeted just for subs. We would put some additional supports and utilization analytics in place. And what we really want to do is be sure that we're retaining the subs on a year-to-year basis. And so there's some things just from a morale standpoint, from a recognition standpoint that we think we could do there. If we look at option number two, it would really be going to some sort of an external staffing solution. As we look at external staffing solutions, I'll just might mention that, you know, our previous work in, in the utility industry, you know, we utilized a lot of similar type of, similar types of staffing needs. We would utilize organizations that would help us with our short-term staffing needs, similar to, very similar to what we do with substitute teachers. So if we considered an external staffing solution, what could we expect? What we see in the market is organizations that are dedicated to sub-staffing, or at least they have branches that are dedicated, branches of their company or departments within their companies that are dedicated to sub-staffing. You'd typically see a management system. They'd have a management system with processes and technology that really would go to support kind of that more temporary staffing approach. And most of the companies are large enough to be able to take advantage of corporate best practices. What you also see is a really kind of a customer service focus. And when I say customer service focus, it's a focus to the, to us as Hamilton County schools. They really have a lot of interaction with their clients on a day-to-day basis. They have a, really a focus on improving fill rates and from an efficiency standpoint, oftentimes they have a capability to, from an economies of scale standpoint. So, so as we looked at if this becomes an option that we can pursue, we looked at what are the potential next steps? Well, we could issue an RFP, but we also have the capability to piggyback on another contract. We've had several school systems that we've found have piggybacked upon a Wilson County contract. And when we discovered that, we looked at that vendor to just, and we've met with this vendor a couple of times, just to really understand how they do work. It's Education Solutions Services. The primary focus is providing staffing for substitute teachers, ed assistants and other support staff for K through 12 schools. They are in 700 school districts across the nation, 23 states, and you can see the Tennessee school districts that they currently support. They're in discussions with Shelby County. A decision has not been finalized there, but we're kind of watching that to see, see what happens there. What we found out, that they have a track record for increasing fill rates. And what we would, if we did business with them, what it would look like, they'll have a local management team that is, either we could house them here in our facility or we, you know, they would be housed in, in an area near to us where we would have the capability to interact with them on a daily basis. By having that local management team, one of the things we feel like it provides us is an opportunity to, first of all, for that smooth transition. And that's some of the feedback that we've gotten is that it is a smooth transition, that the transitions with them have been smooth. If you look at some of the near-term dates, if we went this way, that we could look at a transition, obviously beginning of school year or fall breaks, typically they like, and in any of the firms that we've had discussions with, like to do it on a break point. What would we expect? Probably a larger pool of degreed and non-degreed subs. That would be one of their recruiting emphasis. And actually, if we end up staying in-house with it, that will be one of the areas that we'll emphasize our recruiting in. Of course, we rely on a lot of retired teachers to, to assist us with our staffing. So the other thing that they will focus on would be they will try to essentially recruit our current substitute teachers to move over to work for them. What's in it for the current subs, really no change in compensation. They do have, they do offer benefit programs. Now, we've not looked at the cost of those programs, but nevertheless, there are benefits available for, for the employees. And one of the things we see, matter of fact, this is a place we've learned some lessons and depending on the direction we end up going, we will, you know, take those lessons to heart and apply them, is the way they invest in their employees on training, recognition, and really kind of making them a part of the process. Some of our references, you can see, I won't read those, but we talked to folks at Monroe County, Wilson County, and Blount County. Just to give you a sense for the size of those schools, Monroe County, 12 schools, 5,500 students. Wilson County, the biggest that we talked to, 21 schools and about a little better than 17,000 students. And then Blount County, 20 schools and better than 10,000 students. And really the emphasis we get there is improved fill rates, smooth transition, good customer service, and responsiveness to needs. So when we looked at the costs, what we asked, so, so some of the work, some of the discussion we had with them, we were interested in just exactly what it would cost us. So what we did is do a comparison between our 2018, last year's fill rates and gave them enough information that they could give us a cost estimate back. What this includes from our standpoint is, and we tried to make it an apples-to-apples comparison as best we could. What this includes for us is the cost, actually the money we spent on substitute teachers, the money, you know, for our support staff that runs the system, our, the three employees in HR. We actually did not include any of Angela's time in the estimate. And we did not include any, of course, there's some payroll processing costs that we did not try to include. We gave them that information and as you can see, there's about a $60,000 difference in, in the two, two estimates. Of course, the 60K difference is they're higher. One thing I would note is if, whatever direction we decide to go, is if we end up increasing fill rates, that's going to end up, of course, we're putting more subs in schools, that's going to increase our costs. But we really would be, you know, our target should be 90-plus and that's what the benchmark tells us would be, a good staffing number. So are there any questions?
Dr. Island.
First of all, let me say, Ms. Fogelman, I applaud you for the work that you've done. I sent the, I sent the board, I think Dr. Johnson, a picture from, I've been honored to go to four different human capital initiatives and I'm gonna tell you, the state put those on trying to help schools come up with HR programs. And I believe they could have used Mr. Fogelman as the director rather than the person from the state. That everything they brought up, I said, gosh, we're already doing that. And so, I mean, I just want to applaud him and some of the good things that he's, that you've done. And I appreciate being a bystander more than anything, maybe a little bit of participant in that program. We have one more meeting, is that correct?
That's right.
But, but I appreciate very much the work that you and your staff have done. And of course, Ms. Angela, if we're at $60,000, I mean, we free her up, her time up, she can be, we can use that, her for a lot more things. I've got one question. What do we pay subs, high school and college level now? Do you know offhand? What is?
So we pay a non-degreed 806, degreed $10 an hour, certified 1582. And if we're in a long-term situation, which would be a certified sub.
State minimum, right.
It's $17.14.
And after, after so long, it becomes a state minimum?
Yeah. And that, I think that would be the state minimum, yes.
Yeah.
And then.
I'm sorry, what, high school diploma is what?
$8.06.
$8 times seven hours?
Yeah.
You're talking roughly $56, right?
Yes, sir.
And how much for college?
$10 an hour.
So you're, you're talking about $70 a day?
Yes, sir.
But that, I will say this, we, I know some people in North Georgia that pay substantially more. And so that's part of our problem with recruiting is that, and this is nothing against you guys, but I'm just saying, that is part of the challenge, that when they can go across the line and make, in Dalton, Quitfield County, they can make about $20 more a day.
So one of the things we've, we've had the opportunity to do is one of the associations, statewide associations has actually been doing some work around substitutes. So what we've been able to do is actually collect information of what other counties are paying. Now, we haven't branched down into Georgia because we don't have that capability yet, but we're starting to get a sense for what other counties, both large and small, are paying substitutes. And, you know, the data's still kind of rolling in. So once we kind of see that that's done, we'll do an analysis and compare it to our rates.
If I can make one brief comment on the last statement, I think you implied this, but I want to make it very clarified a little bit. It will cost us more if we fill for every substitute, but there'll be great, much greater productivity academically if you're not having to split those classes and a teacher take a class and a half. And it's much more productive if they're fully filled.
And just one more thing, I appreciate the kind words, but I would, I would be remiss if that, Mike, the key to anything we've done is my staff. Excellent people and they do a really good job.
It's Murray and the whole thing, the whole thing, I agree.
And Dr. Island, could I just elevate one thing for you? That fill rate number is critical because what, what ends up happening is teachers and planning time, you know, and you know this, but they're having to jump over and cover classes. And, and I'm sitting at principal's, sitting at teacher's seat, and when I come into the building and there's six unfilled positions, I cringe sending that message out to teachers that we need some help, you know, with coverage. So increasing that fill rate, which is a challenge nationwide, is something that we know is important going forward.
I would 100% agree with you.
Mrs. Thurman.
Go ahead. Okay. Okay, I guess I have a few questions here. First of all, I'm trying to figure out how an external person sits, same thing we run with with the bus drivers, we're gonna hire now the same pool of people. So why is it outside people can hire more people than we can here? I can give you some reasons why and I've talked to you about some of those, some of those, because a lot of people that tried to get in to be substitutes never got a call back and never did understand, you know, you know, I have, gets calls all the time, what in the world do you have to do to be a substitute in Hamilton County? So maybe these staffing agencies know a little bit better how to do that, maybe that's part of the problem. Because they're hiring from the same group of people, like I say, just like the bus drivers. I mean, they're hiring from the same people in Hamilton County, so I don't know how, why a staffing agency can do that better than we should be able to do it in-house. Another thing, we have, if I recall correctly, we have hired quite a few more people in HR in the last two years. Are we gonna be able to cut the staff in the HR department if they're not having to do this? Maybe make up the difference in the costs that we're having to, to, because I know we have added people in the HR department because it seems like, school board meetings, we've added quite a few positions.
We've, we've added an induction specialist and then we've added, we took one position and you, you all graciously added some dollars for us and we were able to take one position and those extra dollars and turn it into, combine it into two coordinators. We took a director position and a clerical position and some dollars and was able to turn it into two coordinator positions.
I would, I might only add to that is I would, I think you're getting a better HR, I think you're getting a more comprehensive HR program. Let me say it that way. I really do. I think you get a more comprehensive HR program. And at this day and age, and it's just a choice, it's just, you know, we have to continue to make, if we're gonna stay at the leading edge and serve our teachers and our support employees and really be aggressive going after talent, but not just going after talent, because I watch all the time, you know, the, I saw last evening a tweet from Aaron Kirby, I think it was, they were finishing their last comp session, which is around classroom organization and management. Like, if you're gonna have a more comprehensive, robust support program for teachers and employees in general, it does take people. And so, you know, I don't, you know, I think that's still to be fleshed out what's there, but I would contend, just as to the comments that are before, some of the innovative steps that we're trying to take around health and wellness, really evaluating this sub-program, induction programming, really looking very pragmatically at what's happening in our region and trying to stay at the leading edge. We've got people, that's, that's, that's the front door of our school system.
Well, I know. And the reason we're in this shape, I think, and I can appreciate Mr. Fogelman coming in, but for years, we took retired principals and made HR people instead of having HR people run HR. That was a lot of our problem. We didn't have the right people doing that. For some reason, we think if you have an education degree, you can just do lots of different things, that maybe that does, does not always work. So.
Can I ask you a question? Did I do right by bringing an outside person in?
Yeah, but like I say, we got ourselves in a hole big time. Like I say, I've always said we needed HR, and that's one of the things I talked to you about, we need HR people running HR, we don't need retired principals running HR. But like I say, I still don't understand, I guess, if we're gonna have an HR department the size of the one that we have, I just don't know why a staffing agency can do a better job than, than we can in-house. Because you see, Keith, you have to understand, I've seen us save so much money on this school board, we've about gone broke. Every program that we bring on is gonna save us millions and, and, you know, I mean, call me cynical if you want, but I've been around a long time, seen a lot, seen a lot of stuff go on. And like I say, we keep saying, oh, this will save us a million, oh, this will save us this, oh, this will do this and all this, and things just don't ever seem to get any better. So like I say, I'm, it's hard to fool an old fool. And I just wonder if, like I say, why, if a staffing agency can do any better than we should be able to do it here in HR, having you at the helm and hire some real HR people under you that can get the job done. I'm just, if we're gonna. I'm just, if we're going to keep hiring everything, outsource, outsource everything, we're going to have to start letting some people on the inside go. I don't care what, what that is, which department that is, if we keep hiring it out and hiring more people to come in and do our job for us, then some of us need to go.
So just, just a, a couple of points. You know, so from a, you know, how can a staffing agent do it better? So first of all, they've probably got an infrastructure, not just, you know, here in Chattanooga, but in the case of this one company, would be a regional type of infrastructure that they could draw in support. So, you know, if they needed to bring, have a big recruiting event, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll, you know, mobilize all my team. But, you know, they've got a, they've got a kind of a region, a regional approach to recruiting. You know, I'm not saying that we couldn't, if, if we're willing to do some things around staffing, you know, we could probably go do the recruiting. But the kind of way I see it is, and I refer it back to some of my, my previous experiences, I think about, okay, what's my core mission? And, you know, I kind of get up in the morning, and my first thing I think about is how many teachers are we going to hire today? And, you know, and if I can, you know, if we can get our position, our organization in a, in a, in a, in a position to be able to really kind of focus on that core mission of recruiting, retaining our teachers, developing our leaders, working on our benefits programs, then I think that makes us a more efficient HR organization and allows us to maybe do some things, some of those cutting-edge things that we're just kind of really trying to catch up on now. Now, you know, if we want to add, you know, a position or, or some resource dollars to it, and I think we probably can be, we can make a stab at being as, as effective as, as a, as a, one of these staffing organizations. But the one thing we don't have the advantage of is really kind of that corporate infrastructure to rely on them for best practices, as well as to be able to shift and manpower around to address certain needs. You know, because right now, if I've got a staffing need and subs, I'm also right in the middle of our peak time for hiring teachers. So it's hard for me to shift and move.
Yeah, but if you're spending that much time trying to hire subs, and then all of a sudden, they don't have that job to do anymore, that's like, that's going to free up an awful lot of time for probably more than one person.
That's right.
Hence my saying, that if we can let somebody go on the inside to cover the cost of doing that, then maybe so, but if we're going to keep all of those people plus hiring outside agency, I'm just not seeing how that's beneficial.
So, so right now, there's three people responsible for sub. The organization would probably try to hire two of the part-time employees, and what I would probably try to do is take that full-time employee, that's, that's our only staffing person, and I would take that employee and start to utilize them to do some other things in the department.
Mr. McLendon?
With this and going outsourcing it and everything, are we, I don't know, want to say guaranteed's the right word, but, and I know you, you showed some references, but are we guaranteed a higher fill rate? Or, you know, what happens if something comes back and they have a 75% fill rate?
So, look, so part of the whole contractual relationship would be to establish goals within that contract. As a matter of fact, I think, as I understand it, the Wilson County contract has those types of goals in it.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fogelman.
Thank you.
That will bring us to middle school athletics. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Wingate. I wanted to go over a few things tonight about this proposed calendar change.
No, you can break in.
Okay. Yes, sir. This is a, once again, a proposed middle school athletic calendar change. When I became in this new position, there was a couple of people, parents, who had called me, some athletic directors, and over the years, they've been concerned about this. So I started looking into it and talking to different people around the state. And so, what, what I have found out from the TWSSAA, the TMSAA Executive Director of Middle Schools, Richard McQuarter, is that we're the only county in the entire state that is a member of the TMSA that is on a four calendar season. So we're, once again, we're the only member school of the TMSAA that's on the four calendar. Some of the goals that I've been trying to accomplish is to align the HCS Athletic Calendar with the TMSAA Calendar, to see how that process works, to see where we stand. Second, implement the TMSAA Inside Out Initiative for Character Building. This is one of the top TWSSAA objectives that is sponsored by the NFL, and I've been to three different meetings with them at the Titan Stadium, and this one is really big on how to have, change the mindset of educational-based athletics from just winning to building great character, having team goals, team purposes, and things like that. But it also takes time to implement this, and it's just a platform to get everybody on the same page, so that the teams understand what's important to each other. But this is a free program, and with that, the TWSSAA is really trying to push this out across the state. The other one that I've heard through the grapevine over the years, being a, a school-level athletic director at a six through 12, is the increase in athletic revenue. With the new proposed four, the three calendar, we're on a four calendar, and we do not match up with a lot of the surrounding districts. And notice that some schools within our own district do not have JV teams and things like that. We're starting to see a lower activity athletic participations because they're not having the ability to play JV games. With the three calendar, it would open up opportunities to either play North Georgia, Bradley County areas, Dayton, private schools, to increase revenue, but also to increase activities for those students, especially JV students. The complexities of all this, and I've ran into many, speaking with people, former people that actually put this into place, it went into, in the mid-'80s, some people were saying mid-'80s, early '90s, that this four calendar season went in, and some of the, the concerns back then that we're still facing today is facility conflicts, those being primarily with soccer and football. Because soccer uses, at the middle school, we do not have all fields, we don't have a soccer and a football field in most of our middle schools, so they have to share that. So that's one of the major conflicts, going to a three calendar from a four calendar. Limited facilities, not enough fields and space, certain, some of our schools are, if you want to call it landlocked, and so they have to share different things, and, and so facilities and sharing those are, are a concern. Then, talking and reaching out and getting feedback from coaches and other school-level athletic directors, they have also said that there was a possibility of limited officials that could be, you know, at our, some of our events if we moved to a three calendar because it's going to match up with other people. So that is a concern, but I did reach out to Richard McQuarter from the TWSSAA, and he said that he would try to work things through, dealing with officials and try to market. The pros to this four, changing the four calendar to a three calendar, our athletes can compete at the TMSAA State Tournaments. As of right now, there are three state championships that are offered at the middle school level. It is cross-country, basketball, and track and field. And with all three of those, our seasons do not match up. Track and field, it is during the spring, but our season ends early, and the state championships are after, and that's actually going to be next year, in 2020. The state has told me that they will be introducing new state championships in the future, but nothing's on the board, on the Legislative Council, or the Board of Controls next year. But they are considering other, other sports. So that's another reason why the pros of going to a three calendar. Teams will be able to compete against surrounding districts and private schools, as I mentioned earlier, and one of the big things is no seasons overlapping. A lot of people don't realize that some of our seasons, especially football, it actually ends on a Tuesday, and soccer started on that Monday. And so we have kids that either are late getting out to the next season, or what, whatever the issue might be. But also, that, I had a parent from Saudi Daisy Middle School, that really just kind of touched me, was the fact that their family had been ready for a middle school, the eighth grade recognition night, that their, their child was wanting to be there, and because we had that rain on that Tuesday, it was a drop-down, drop-dead date, and we were unable to reschedule that game for those parents. And so that happened across the district, but of course, I, the one that called me was telling how their family had tried to be there and they couldn't do it. And so that was, that was one of the kickers for me. Time for development of our athletes with the three season, it does extend the seasons two or three weeks, which kind of meets certain criteria when it comes to developing our athletes before. One AD at one of our schools was talking about, you know, they only practice for three or four days, and then they're ready to compete, and that, that sets up some other issues. And also, it gives coaches time to go over maybe strategies, other kinds of things that, and fundamentals that hopefully will, will go and carry with them into high school. Able to adjust for inclement weather cancellations with this, it gives us some little leeway and a couple of weeks before each season. So if we have a situation such as the Saudi Daisy Middle and other, other type of things, we can adjust that and move it around a little bit without interfering with the other sports. Also, which I never knew until, in being an AD for a long time, I started looking at the four calendar season and noticed that there was an unequal amount of female sports that were offered first semester of the first 18 weeks compared to the last 18 weeks, being that there were seven sports offered for girls the first half of the year and only two the second half. With the proposed three calendar, it would try to equate and make that equal across the board for especially our female athletes. The cons, coaches might have to choose, which is a, a concern, might have to choose between middle school coaching and high school coaching. Some coaches do both, and because some of the seasons will be aligned, they will, might have to make a choice in determining which, which team that they would like to coach. The pay supplement, the longer season consideration, because we are moving to a three, which extends the seasons a little bit, we're, we, we want to talk, I've got information that HR did back in December from surrounding counties and districts within the state to see where we are equitable with middle school coaches around the state, and I'm going to look at that and try to figure out ways that maybe we can increase coaching pay supplements to maybe offset some of those coaches that might make, have to make those decisions. I also informed the coaches yesterday at our meeting that if, logistically, if they could work those things out, there's nothing illegal about them coaching two sports, as long as they are doing it at two different times. So that was one of the, one of the main concerns, and I completely understand that, because a lot of our coaches do depend on the supplements. The amount of sport choices offered to individual students will lessen, meaning that there, there will be a drop because kids now, students will have to choose, like they would in high school, three, in three seasons compared to four. To give you an idea, and one of the main things that was told to me from previous administrations and things like that, one of the main focuses was giving our middle school, middle school students more opportunities if you went to a four season. So what I did was, I had the TWSSAA send me and run data about this, and I had Tammy Carnim from the data department came and kind of went through some of this with me. That's what her expertise is. But to kind of give you an idea, in 2014 and 15, there were 1,775 students that only played one sport, and you can see it across the board. But when you go down to number four, those, those students that are utilizing that four calendar season, there were only 27 students in the entire district, was less than 1% in 1415, and then if you come in 2016 and 17, you'll notice it was 38 students. So the four-season calendar, the idea of that, it really doesn't hold up because we started to look, most of our students don't utilize that anyway. The one very interesting one was the fact that in 1415 and 1516, there were two students that actually played five sports, which is legal, that you can do that. The current calendar, you will notice that it's on the left, that is your four seasons, and you can read that, you've got your football and your main things, but you can see why, if you look at season one and season two, football is there, then soccer, and that's, that's relative because of the field situations that we run into. And so that was one of the things that the previous administrations back in the late '80s, '90s were considering. And so, when you look at the proposed calendar, the one on the right, Tammy Carnim and I, we, we broke this down too, that they sent, and so we started to look at all the athletes from last year, and where, if we did move these sports to what? Now, of course, this is not this year's data, but this would probably be pretty close. And if we moved football, softball, cross-country, and tennis and golf into season one, which is known as the fall season in the TWSSAA, it would affect only about 2% of our students. That they would, they would now have to probably choose between what they were going to participate in, be just like it is in high school. Season two, which is your winter, would be basketball and wrestling, and that would affect approximately 2% there. The one that was most concerning to me was season three. And season three, when you put in baseball, soccer, volleyball, and track, it would affect approximately 18% of our students, which is, you know, one, about one out of every five. Okay? But with the new calendar, when you take all of that into, to account, it would allow 93% of all of our athletes to still participate in the sports that they, they want.
Could you leave that up?
Yes, sir.
Jackson, there are several things, you know, I think we need to look at on that.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anyone else, I'm sorry.
You finished with yours? You ready for some questions?
Yeah. If he wants to discuss this.
We can come back, we can bring that slide back up.
No, Dr. Islander, go ahead, since we're on this.
I, I think, I see some real positives, I mean, really, really positives. I also see some real, real negatives. One, the TMSAA has not had accurate counting from us because we've not been implementing it. We have not sent number counts regularly. You can check with Dr. McDade maybe, but they have not been, been real concerned with sending numbers in because we've not been real active. I've been told, now, I don't know, I may have been told. What I'm concerned on this, and I see some really good things. Developmentally, for a kid in, in basketball and wrestling, I mean, that is fabulous. I, I mean, it's very positive. You know, the, the short seasons they have, if they have inclement weather, they could lose a third of their season real easily.
Yes, sir.
And, and getting ready for it, and, and I do, that's very positive. I'm concerned in spring, in season three, the spring, baseball, I know our kids cannot, they cannot start their summer leagues or their, their elite teams until our season's over, and we're extending that longer, we will be, some of them will be, have to choose whether they do school ball or, or elite summer ball. And Mr. Wingate might can talk about that, but we, right now, I know we have not allowed, TMSA does not allow any baseball, am I not correct, Coach Wingate? But I've, I've dealt with that in the past, they do not allow, we cannot, we do not allow anyone to play in both.
As of right now, the TWSSAA is actually on the Legislative Council, that's Board of Control, that they are considering to allow all sports, because there were a few sports that they were allowed to play outside entities. And so they are, they're actually in the discussion right now, either all-in or all-out. But to get back to your other point, the TWSSAA, all of our middle schools have to put in eligibility, have to put the kids on the rosters, and that's where Brad Lambert from the TWSSAA ran those numbers, because they just ran every kid and actually had student IDs, I didn't get to see the kids' names, but they had their IDs, and so they use that, those numbers as part of the data to, to, to come up with this.
Something we may have to tweak. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about small schools. I'm looking at Orchard Knob, Sail Creek, Lookout Valley, some of the smaller schools. And I know I talked to, I talked to a coach that was at a track made, a middle school, and I've been trying to talk to, and my, the three in my district and some of the others too. too, middle school administrators and, and ADs. And one of the, one of the ADs said they had a track meet, and they said they're, they were, they had three of the suburban schools and Orchard Knob. And Orchard Knob had six girls and eight boys. And which, you know, but still in individual sport, they can compete. But if we're looking at putting volleyball, all six of those girls that ran track also played volleyball.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know.
Volleyball is one of those that I was going back and forth with. Doesn't mean this is still not finalized. I was going to run some new numbers, because some of the questions came up last night at their coaches meeting, dealt with how many it would affect. If you take track out of that, I think it was only going to affect like 7, 8%. So when you put track in there, but.
Track would have to be in, we're going to go with the state program.
Exactly. But it just kind of gives you an idea about how, how, when you take one out like that, how it can make a huge difference. Volleyball assigner basically said, well, you know, it's going to be real hard for us to do it in the fall. Can't do it in the winter because you got facility conflicts with wrestling and basketball. And the only other spot was in, in the spring. With that, golf now has come back and said, hey, we're going to run into some issues with scheduling. But nobody had told me that until last night. I was under the impression that this would help them with competition, but it actually doesn't. But I started thinking about last night when I left, if we move golf to the spring, then we can even offset this more. So I need to look at that to see what those numbers are, to see how it's going to affect that.
And I think you've done a good job. One thing, there's two different philosophies on middle school. Two basic philosophies, I think. And I was in the system when we set up the original. And it's been tweaked and shortened. It has been tweaked quite a bit since the, the concept first came in. We went to junior high and middle school. They have shortened the seasons since then. And I will say this, as far as the coaches are concerned, a baseball coach gets 3%, I believe, if my memory is correct. And I did middle school baseball at one time. And if you, for a man or woman that does field preparation, that does practices, hauls kids, I mean, you're looking at way under minimum wage already.
Yes, sir.
And to extend their season, you know, we're looking.
And that's exactly why we're going to look into the supplemental.
And I'm in agreement with you there.
Yes, sir.
But now, I am real concerned with the small schools in this, that most of the ozone schools, plus some of the smaller schools in outlying areas. But the philosophy difference I've got, I'm looking at, is are we, in middle school, are we trying as our primary goal to get them ready for high school? Or is it to give them an exploratory program athletically and see what they want to do later on? And it's just two different philosophies. And when we came back in the 90s, we were looking at the exploratory possibility.
And here, here are two things. Go back to your small school things. We actually have schools, both at the high school level and at the middle school level, that co-op with other schools that is allowed by the TWSSAA. So if we do run into certain things, there are teams such as CSLA that already co-op in football, Normal Park, think small schools like that, that they could actually co-op with another, with another school, and that would be legal. The other part was, one thing that was told to me, and this was told to by a friend of mine, if you give those kids the opportunity to kind of give you an idea for the four season and for the participation, when they get to high school, they got to make that choice. Okay? With that said, when they're at middle school, and you have an average athlete and a very good athlete that are in the same sport, the great athlete or the better athlete will start varsity at the middle school level. And then when he gets to high school, or she gets to high school, she is also, they're going to stay with their sport. The other kid who was an average athlete, didn't even, they might not even had any varsity experience at the middle school level because the other kid got the position. When they go to high school, they either quit, or they don't have the experience because they've never had varsity. So there are two takes to that philosophy about having choices, because ultimately they're going to have those choices when they get to high school.
Could I ask, would it be within my realm? We have at least one middle school administrator here. Could we get some input from you, from Robert?
Dr. Highlander, can I, let's get some questions from other folks.
At the third time at the end, I'd like to get administrator input.
Okay. Mr. McLendon.
Gotcha. I'm kind of confused.
Yes, sir.
Just a little bit. We're doing this so we align with the TMSAA criteria so they can compete at states, but then you're saying, oh, we can move this around, we can move this around.
That's a, that's a great point. We wanted to align those three particular right now. Because of the facility conflicts, because of things like soccer and football, we tried, I tried to figure out where, where we could go with it. So we didn't run into any kind of issues legally or anything else. And so the, when you move soccer, to give you an idea, when you move soccer to the spring, there's no conflicts with fields.
Yeah, okay. That, that makes a little more, makes more sense. And then I will, I'll echo kind of what Dr. Highlander said about small schools. This, I have two, I have CSLA and East Ridge, and this, especially in the spring, will hit them hard. And I understand it's a, it's a tricky thing.
Yes, sir.
But also it's, you know, I kind of, the way I get there, we can compete in state championships and stuff like that. But that's when kids get to know, hey, I love soccer, I hate baseball, or whatever else. And, you know, making a kid decide in middle school what they want to play for the next, you know, six, seven years. You know, I don't know if they're ready to make that decision, but.
Yes, sir.
Just what I could, real quick, just to make sure that Brad's real clear, this is proposed, still a lot of information that he's in, that he's taken in. Don't expect any board action on this, you know, in the, in the immediate. Careful to do this. I speak from the context of a former high school coach and college student athlete. And father of a seven-year-old. There's a, there is a, there is an element of, of definitely, and you understand the being torn, there's definitely an element of exploration. And my son right now is a seven-year-old, and I always hesitant to use him, but I will. He's exploring a lot of sports right now. Now, I will tell you as a seven-year-old, I'll tell you as his father, at some point we're going to choose something, and we're going to double down in those few things. But, but I, I do understand both sides of it. I do want us to be careful though, that when students start to get to the high school level, there is a, especially in this day and age, as, as sports get more competitive and the training gets more intense, I mean, I'm, I'm just always amazed at the level of training that goes on, that there is a level of rigor to the sport that looks a little bit different than it does the middle school level. So there's a fine line between them exploring and them really being prepared and not, there's also this element on the other side of setting them up for failure. So I think this is a very open conversation. I give one more anecdote here, that when I first started here, I got a call pretty early on from a parent, which is the whole reason why Brad's exploring this, I guess some, in addition to TWSSAA pointing out as a major concern or question. I had a parent who had a child who was in cross country, and the student had qualified for, I don't know if it was regionals or state, or whatever it was. Long story short, the way our system is operated, we didn't allow that student to, the proposal was not to allow that student to compete at the state level. I didn't understand that. My gosh, you know, if a student, if a parent is wanting to take the child and student athlete is good enough, why not let them compete and go ahead? Well, it had to do with this calendar issue and what was there. So definitely a lot of concerns that exist here. There's a lot more work that Brad will go back and do in regards to this. We want to make sure that this was in front of you all as, as this conversation that is, is happening, but definite work that we'll continue to do, and Brad and Ken will continue to do, to make sure that as many questions are answered as possible, and then ultimately ask the board to act either way.
Mrs. Lynn.
And I might be wrong on this, but it seems to me that from a calendar that I saw previously, that the girls, the girls volleyball and soccer are moved, but none of the boys' sports were moved. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So which one are you speaking of right now, Ms. Lynn?
From, okay, the, the football was, stayed the same. Softball, cross country. Volleyball changed. From season three. The soccer has gone from season two to season three.
Yes, golf is, yes.
But no, the, the football, no, that is the same. I just, I just have concerns about the, I just need to look at it.
Yes, ma'am.
It just seemed, I'm just concerned about the smaller schools, as well as Dr. Highlander is, and I just need to look at it. It just seems to me that some of the kids might be missing out on some opportunities that are involved in the smaller schools, that they're not going to get to play the sports like they were. And also the larger schools, the playing fields.
Yes, ma'am. And, and there are going to be some issues that we're going to run into. Basketball is a great example that we run into right now. You got females and males trying to use one gym, and so they have to work that out logistically. To get back to, to some of the smaller schools, there are other opportunities, maybe not from the district itself, but through YMCA, through other things, that they could be able to participate in certain athletic events or athletic activities through other outside organizations. So that, that, that could be an option that some of the students might have.
All right. Mrs. Hill, before you go though, I just want to remind everybody again, this is a proposal, right? So first time everybody's had a chance to look at it, there'll be opportunity, I think, for everybody to look at this more deeply and, and chew on that, and even go out and hear concerns of other folks. So, Ms. Hill.
Thank you. What part of the strategic plan did you say this aligns with?
The strategic plan?
Yeah, what part of the strategic, we don't have a printout, so I don't know where your little square is.
Operations.
It was effective operations.
Yes.
Okay. So when we look at this, we'd be looking for efficient and effective operations. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So what I'm noticing is that two things really cause a lot of conversation, athletics and money.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm learning a lot about athletics as I serve on the school board. And I won't repeat anything that anybody else said, but I'll tell you what, when you said the word supplements, and then you said increase, my blood kind of went effervescently. Because you know what doesn't have a season? Theater. Music. Dance. I serve District Six, and we have some really unique schools in District Six. Not only very small schools, but also some of our art schools. And to say that we might be wanting to look at increasing supplements for a coaching season, because now it extends a handful of additional weeks, when we've got teachers who are splitting supplements at our art schools, we've got teachers who are getting the bare minimum supplement or zero supplement. Just as we think about this overall, Dr. Johnson, that's a piece where if this isn't broken, I'm going to have a hard time voting to fix it, especially if it's going to mean taking money that could be, when we talk about equitably distributing it to other staff members who are working especially hard. So as we process this, know that that's going to be something I'm going to be measuring in against very closely.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Smith.
Bradley, you know, it's tough. And you, you spend a lot of energy talking about the pros and the cons, and there are a lot. And I was a high school football, basketball official for 25 years, and what I've noticed over the years is that if you just want to judge our competitiveness, we're not as competitive as, as other counties around the state. It's been a long time since we won a state championship on the high school level. It's been a long time. Basketball, same way.
Yes, sir.
So, so that tells me something about how maybe we're developing athletes at a young age. But when I, we first started having this conversation, I made a point to talk to my two principals. And their concern is some that you've mentioned about coaching and, you know, how you're going to do all that. Officials is going to be your biggest issue. And I've saw over my 25 years, I'm a quarter now, and the predecessor before him make promises that they just couldn't keep. And they depended on the local associations to recruit and train officials, and, and the associations here just hadn't been able to do that. And that's why on any given Friday night, you'll see a lot of white-haired guys running down the football field, because they're not, they don't have, they just don't have enough. So that, that's going to be a, a real issue. The thing that I've just encouraged you to do, and both of my principals asked me to present this to you. One of them is pretty opposed to it, the other one is not, she's pretty for it. But what they both ask, if we are going to go in this direction, they want you to give them some time to implement this. I mean, we're already in April. And if we want to go to a three-season calendar, and I guess that's okay, again, I'm indifferent. But I don't, I don't think it's enough time for those principals to work out their coaching staffs. So I, I think we need to be real sensitive to that. Let me say one other thing, and I'll hush. So think about that, as you're putting all this together. The other thing is, I had, and I mentioned this to you, I had a parent, a volunteer coach today send me an email that came from you.
Yep, they sent it to one coach.
And I read the email.
And I was passionate, and with the wisdom of Dr.
You need to emphasize.
With, with the wisdom of Dr. Bradshaw, I understand that went to one coach that I was passionate about, and, but every, everything I have sent out, it has always been proposed.
When it looks like this one, not all of them.
No, sir.
Well?
Yeah, they, they sent that. But that's, but that is, that is my fault. I was passionate, and I'm learning. And so when, when all this, when you start to, when my new position, you start to learn, hey, there are other things. And so I have made sure that I have said proposed and everything, and I have listened to every AD, every coach, because at first I had things set up differently. And with them, I started making changes to try to fit in, just like last night. I realized that no one had told me about the golf situation. And so because of that, I'm going to revisit that and look at where we, where we can and where we can't move. To get back on your other one, I have talked to officials, the assigners, they say it can be difficult. But if we logistically work that with games on certain days, we might be able to.
Well, they're going to tell you what you want to hear in that regard. I've been there, did it for 25 years. So they're going to tell you what you want to hear. But again.
Yes, sir.
And let me emphasize this, is that this is April. And I think we've got to be sensitive to these principals that are going to have to hire their coaching staff and move people around to be able to accommodate the change. I'm not opposed to it. I think it's got some good points, but I, just keep that in mind, that's all.
Mr. Smith, I think that's a great thing, and I'm going to reach out. We actually talked about that last night very quickly. How many does it affect? But I will send out and try to get a total. How many does it affect? Even some of the coaches last night said it wasn't as much as they had thought.
Ms. Jones.
I always want to call you Dr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson.
I appreciate that, but.
I do, I call him a lot about these issues, so that's why I'm about to, we've talked several times about this. So one, I do want to thank you for taking the time to listen to the parents, because I know I called you several times, my middle school parents and schedules and sports.
Yes, ma'am.
And so one, I thank you for taking the time to listen to the parents and research this, and to look into what you could do better. I also thank you for looking into the JV issue, because I've called you a couple times from both sides of the fence about the JV and the lack of the ability for teams to be able to play JV, because one team didn't have it, one team did. So I thank you for that and researching that. I know that takes a lot of time. Now, I am not sports savvy at all. I don't claim to be. I don't know nothing about officials, seasons, none of that. I didn't do that. I was a band kid, book kid, okay? So I want to say that, I know this is a proposal, and I just want everybody up here to remember that this is a proposal, so I don't think it's going to start in April. Doesn't sound like it's going to start in May, or even June. It might not even start until my baby's in school. I mean, you know how things go around here. So we have to keep that in mind, and, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to tell you that I fully support whatever the ADs. I also want to tell you that I fully support whatever the ADs and the coaches in the schools say, because I don't have a dog in this fight, other than the children who want to participate in these sports. And I do represent schools that, which some people up here have said they're concerned about, but I haven't gotten a call from any of those schools, and maybe that's because a lot of my coaches are more concerned about their, their players' books and academics than what, what they get to do right here, because we are in that spot as well. They're just looking at more academics right now where, where I represent, but I just want to let you know that for me, I, I don't have, I don't have all this expertise to go around, I just, whatever's going to be best for the kids, whatever's going to be best for the athletic departments, because I, I do know, I mean, I represent Tyner, and they don't have a middle school soccer field, and we get that a lot about, they can't play on the football field, because they, I mean, it's a whole different dynamic. So just thank you for what you've done, thank you for listening to those of us who have called and shared those concerns from the staff, from the parents, from the children about those things, and once again, I just support whatever they, they want, because I can't tell you what that looks like.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones.
Very quick, very quick. Brad, and Dr. Bradshaw, I appreciate both of you, you're, you're trying to look at this comprehensively, and I, I very much appreciate that. I will say this, I've had several parents call me concerned with the, with the different football schedules, they're trying to set up their vacations right now. They say if we don't know in the next week or two, we're going to be in bad trouble, because we have to set our vacations in stone, and we have fifth graders that are going to be coming in. When, when do the fifth graders come in, Mr. Alfred, first week of May?
I think on May 3rd.
So, May 3rd, so, I, I mean, I would suggest, I, I think you've got some great ideas, I'd suggest get all the ADs and principals and work with you, work with them, and be ready for next year, and I don't think there's any way we can be ready this year. That's just my.
All right. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to take just a second here. One, I would say, Ms. Hill, I agree with you in regards to when we start looking at supplements, we need to be looking at employees who dedicate their time, whatever, or wherever that may be, and I know that I've had a conversation already with Mr. Fogelman in particular about that. But, but what I will say is, and this is, this is coming from somebody who's finishing my 21st year, and coached everything from JV, sixth grade basketball, middle school football, and high school baseball, and high school football, and now seven-year-old baseball, and coed five and six-year-old soccer, and junior college baseball, and Division One baseball. What I will say is, the system is broken. It is broken. It is not serving the best interests of our students. One of the reasons that motivated me to seek to serve on this board was that, in my opinion, we did not value extracurricular activities at all, regardless of whether it was the arts or athletics. Those extracurricular activities in the past had not been valued, they'd not been supported, and we still don't support the athletic part, although I am thrilled to see what we've done with the arts, and the work that Claire Stockman has done in a short time, a very short time. And on top of that, we've not strategically implemented, we've not had a plan for how athletics fits into the educational experience of our students. For me, this has nothing to do with competing for championships, aligning with the state association, I care nothing about that. What I care about is as a system, regardless of whether it's in the realm of academics or extracurricular, is that we provide a structure that allows students to develop skill. And right now, our middle school athletic structure does not allow for that. Right now, what takes place is we give out a uniform, we hand a supplement to a teacher coach, then we pat everybody on the back, and we move on and hurry to the next season. And that's what happens. If, if athletics are going to be of educational value, then what can't take place is that the physically mature sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade boy and girl walk out and are able to play because they have developed more quickly, and not because we've had a season with a coach who can talk to them about and allow them to have opportunities to, to develop tactical decision-making, where they are able to make decisions without being told what to do every single time a situation occurs on a court of competition or a field of competition, in a highly emotional situation that's going to serve them well later on in life. And I, I will echo what Mr. Smith has said, we've talked about this a lot, guys, I, I am passionate about us doing things in a way that is excellent, and, and right now, athletics in our middle schools and our high schools consistently are not done that way. They're not. Now, we, do we have success in certain pockets? We do, but it's, it's traditionally because there's a coach, or a teacher, or a club sponsor, or whoever, who is so passionate about what it is they're doing, that they elevate, and they bring the structure that is needed. We don't provide that, we don't provide it financially, up until Mr. Jackson's position, we have not even provided that administratively. And so it, it's, it's in a mess, it's in a wreck, and I, I just want to see it valued, I want to see it supported, I want to see it implemented, because when athletics are done well, they absolutely add to the educational experience. But when they're not done well, I, I mean, in my opinion, if we're not going to do them well, we just don't need to have them. And that's coming from somebody who, that's my chosen profession. If we're not going to do it well, let's just don't do it. And obviously, there are some things that we need to talk about and we need to discuss, but I really believe that we will be doing them a service, not if we, and I, and I'm going to push back on the exploration piece, you want to explore, go explore at the YMCA, go explore at the rec league, those opportunities are available to you at middle school age. But if all we're doing is exploring in middle school, then I don't know that there's value, educational value in that, there's just not. I, I'd be hard pressed for someone to convince me otherwise, if we're going to use it as a tool. And so anyway, a long way to go on that. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for the work that you've done. Thank you for, I know this has taken a while to come up with statistics to coordinate. The only other thing I'd say is I get it on officials, officials are shorthanded all over the place. All I know is, we're surrounded by school systems that are able to get it done this way, so officials are going to adjust. We're going to be shorthanded whether we got an eight-season calendar or a two-season calendar, they're just, people don't want to do it anymore, I mean, they just, they just don't, so. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Lastly, Mr. Goldberg, school nutrition, federal programs.
This will certainly not be as dynamic as middle school athletics. But as the parent of a middle school athlete, I, I would prefer the three-season schedule, Just trying to fill in up the time here. All right. So you should, you all should have handouts, this stapled packet that has three different pages in it, one's nutrition, one's federal programs, and one is self-funded programs. The first one we will talk about is school nutrition. This budget, the proposed budget is approximately $250,000 less than last year as a total budget. The budget's approximately $21 million, and it includes a few, a few highlights of what's included in this budget for, for the school nutrition budget. This budget includes a pay increase for all of our cafeteria personnel, which is equivalent to one regular step, an extra step, and a 3% increase. We need to be more competitive on our pay to cafeteria personnel. This also includes leave for cafeteria personnel after one year of employment, that includes one sick day, three personal days, and five holidays. And this budget would increase starting pay by 48 cents an hour compared to last year. This also does not include a price increase for lunch. It replaces 12 part-time positions with six full-time positions, just because we, the utilize, the part-time positions just weren't getting utilized, we'd be better off having the, the full-time. And one way we've accomplished this is through budgeting at 97% rather than 100% staffing, because we all know we'd never have 100% staffing and with our cafeteria personnel. So those are the highlights of what is included here. I don't have anything else for you on school nutrition. Kristin Noss is here, if you have any detailed questions, but, and if we can, can we go ahead and do questions on this before we do federal programs?
Dr. Highlander, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think we can go ahead.
Okay. The next page is going to be federal programs. You will see that the proposed budget is almost 29 and a half million dollars, and includes funding for 571 positions. That is equivalent to the same budget for fiscal year 19. A couple of things to note is, the federal programs budget last year included the Safe Schools and Family Resource Center grants that come from the state. Because of state guidelines on how we report those, we're, we are moving those to the general purpose fund and out of federal programs, the revenue and expense both go, so it's a wash on the general fund. It's just a note that those are not in here like they were last year, if any of you remember last year's budget. And then also, because of a finding from the state on significant disproportionality with discipline, we are being required to set aside a certain amount of our IDEA money to be used for behavior intervention, and in order to do that, we are going to be moving some special ed assistance to the general purpose budget. Because of that, set aside is no longer allowed to be used for the regular special ed budget, so we'll take care of that, so that we do not have to reduce any personnel for special, special education. Those are, those are the highlights I have for federal programs. If there are any questions there.
Any question or comments on that?
We have lost a little bit of money from federal grant, federal input, is that correct?
Yeah, it's primarily those, the, the grants we've had to move from federal into GP. So the revenue and the expense are both moving, but that's primarily the difference. Otherwise, federal programs are similar. As you know, Dr. Highlander, we amend, we have to amend these budgets monthly.
Title one, title one money, I believe, is down a little bit, isn't it?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Title one money from the federal government?
Yeah, well, it depends on which bucket it falls into.
Yeah, the way it's set up in a lot of our schools.
Yeah, and there was something Ms. Robinson had asked about at the last board meeting, which is included on the next few slides, so, so this is an overview of the federal dollars allocated by the title buckets, and, and Dr. Edwards can talk about this.
So, Ms. Robinson, I think at the last board meeting, wanted to make sure that a few slides that she saw in the federal programs advisory meeting were shared with the board overall, and so I'll just step through these pretty quickly. This was the breakout that you all have seen in terms of the Title I, II, III, and IV that we have in the district, and mostly people hear us talk about Title I Part A, which is for students in poverty. So we have a designation of the schools that receive Title I funding under this section. And one of the things that we've been talking about in the district is looking at how we spiral out that Title I funding to the schools that are highest poverty. And this chart, you all have it printed out, so that it doesn't have to be an I chart here, but we went and we did a comparison, that the gray, this table is ranked by the gray column, and PPA stands for per pupil allocation. And what we were trying to determine is how does Hamilton County compare to the other large districts in the state in terms of our top per pupil allocation for our highest poverty schools coming from Title I? And so this, I think, is fiscal year 17 data. And so we looked and we noticed that if you see, Hamilton County is second from the bottom, so our highest poverty schools that are considered, considered 100% economically disadvantaged, the highest per pupil allocation was $480, whereas if you look at the top of the list, Williamson, Rutherford, which of course have a smaller number of Title I schools, certainly not necessarily the same profile, but I think Knox is, is a good example as well. Knox's top per pupil allocation out of Title I dollars for its highest poverty school is $942. And so that's essentially double what we were doing in our district. And so it brings into question in terms of are we appropriately using Title I dollars to resource our highest poverty schools, which is what this section is intended for? One of the drivers of this, if you look, thinking about Knox, Knox County has 35 Title Schools out of about 90 schools overall in the district, and in Hamilton County, we have 49 Title I schools designated out of only 76 schools. So, yes.
Got a question, and maybe, I'm sure you're, you're good with numbers, with your banking experience, you can help me, but I'm looking at Knox County has low income served 12,836 kids. We have 20,998, yet their federal allocation is 11,263, ours is 9,061.
So, great point. Let me clarify that the number of low income served is based on the number of schools that they designate as Title I, right? So it's basically saying that among the 35 schools that they've included in their Title I threshold, it's 12,836 students, and for us, we designated 49 of our schools as Title I schools, and so that's why that number looks like 20,000. So I'll say it this way, what we've done is include more of our schools, even schools that are close to the district poverty level, like average poverty in our district, so we're picking up more of those students who are economically disadvantaged. In Knox, they've made a decision to concentrate on the highest poverty schools, and so to your point, that is why they have fewer students included in their Title I spiral, and so those schools are getting an allocation of $942 per student versus in our district, those students are getting, those highest poverty schools are getting $480. So when you look at the max poverty column, our max poverty rate in our Title I schools is 100% as well, and, as it is in Knox, but when you look at the minimum poverty rate, where we're going all the way down to 50%, and Knox is stopping at 53, and you can see where their title allocation is, even for the lowest in the spiral. But I, I do think it's important to talk about the proportion of schools. So again, 35 schools out of 90 in Knox, and we have 76 schools, and we've designated 49 of them as Title I.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have been talking with the schools about how do we address that and right sizing it. Another thing that we looked at was in the fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18 in our district, we did these, these tiers. So you would have a cut point, and we'd say, well, if you were above 75% economically disadvantaged students, your poverty, your, excuse me, per pupil allocation would be the 480, you were in the top tier. But if you were just at 74%, then you got to the next tier, which would go all the way down to, let's say, 300 in our district. And so that, that, that hard tiering meant that schools that could be very similar in their poverty rate would have very different allocations. And so we were talking about how do we address that and smooth out our spiral. So for fiscal year 19, we eliminated the tiers, and we have more of a smooth formula step down, so meaning your per pupil allocation changes as the percent poverty rate decreases, right? So that means if I'm 74% economically disadvantaged versus the school that's 75% economically disadvantaged, we have very similar per pupil allocations, because it's just a smooth formula. And in that step down as opposed to the tiers, then we also managed to increase our max per pupil for the highest poverty schools, so we stepped that up to $550 for this fiscal year, and once we included our carryover, it actually went up to 583 from the 480 that you saw in that previous chart, so we made some progress. And then we made our minimum PPA was $300, and still increased to 333 after carryover. So what we've been trying to do is think about how do we make sure we appropriately resource using Title I dollars our highest poverty schools, and not spread those dollars too thin in terms of, which starts to diminish the impact at the schools that have the most high, the highest concentrations of economically disadvantaged students. And then we were talking about how do we continue to right-size, if you will, our Title I, and we've been discussing with Brent, his plan is to develop a strategic finance plan, a three-year fi, a strategic finance plan. So over the next three fiscal years, we've considered how do we think about what the minimum PPA is, so for those schools that are below the district poverty rate that we're including. in our Title I schools, do they need to get a high proportion of that per pupil allocation, particularly when it's reducing the amount of money that we can funnel towards the highest poverty schools? And then, we need to consider this 50% to 60% bucket. So, we've got schools that are at the 50% to 60% level of poverty rate when the district poverty rate is about 60%. So, the question is philosophically, are those high poverty schools in our district when they're lower poverty than our average across the district? And so, should we be including them in the Title I spiral threshold? And then, with the strategic finance plan, in order to think about those middle-tier schools, I'll call them the middle-tier poverty schools, do we have a base staffing model that considers economically disadvantaged rates across the continuum? The way that most districts address this, you've heard people talk about a weighted funding formula. It's how we get BEP money. It considers the amount of at-risk students we have across multiple categories. And so, in our staffing model, historically, there has not been an intentional look at the poverty concentration in a school such that those middle-tier schools would see themselves getting additional staffing to help support what may be some of the same needs they have to address similarly or different from a more affluent school. So, we need to right-size our base staffing model as we consider these conversations around Title I. So, those were the three slides that we shared in that meeting that Ms. Robinson wanted to make sure that we discussed more with the broad board.
Could, just real quickly, if you can, you can help me with this. I know, in my district, you know, District Nine, and Rhonda's district, Jones' district, actually, all of them, we have schools that are fairly affluent, but we have pockets of horrible poverty, and rural poverty, and whatever. And it just seems as though the schools that are in a high concentration, and I understand, and they need help, but those individuals in the other schools need the help just as much as, as the children do that are in the high percentage poverty schools. How are we dealing with that?
So, I think we aren't. That's the, that's the base staffing model, right? We haven't typically had an actual general fund budget that considers that we have pockets of poverty across the district, and that all schools, as we look at the continuum, I mean, we have schools that have less than 10% of economically disadvantaged students all the way up to schools that have 90-plus% economically disadvantaged. And to your point, a school that has a population of 30% to 40% economically disadvantaged, that means that there are families with real needs in that school. And our general operating fund has not spoken to that. And, and, you know, the whole notion of federal supplement not supplant is because they have an expectation that as a district, we first try to address some of those risks out of our general fund budget, and that the Title I supplement is for high poverty, like the most disadvantaged communities, the most at-risk schools with the highest concentrations of poverty, which is a supplement after we've tried to address some of the other poverty with our base staffing model.
If I could just, one quick thing, staffing is, so, this, this shift in staffing, which we are gradually implementing, it's uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable for school, I mean, there hadn't really been that, that structure in place. That's one thing, I know it was board, you all have talked about, the need, and really, in an organization of 400-plus million dollar budget, you've got to have a staffing model, or else your resources are just arbitrarily directed. And so, we're trying to be very thoughtful about the way this is folding in. But it all comes, it all come full circle and fit really nicely once you scale it in the right way. So, I just want to impress upon the board that this, as, as executive directors are having conversations with schools and working to figure out staffing and work through that, that we are trying to be thoughtful. And what's the, I was going to say confidence interval, what's the, what's the, what's the mechanism you put into place for stability factor?
Yes, stability factor.
Stability factor.
I'm like, where are we going?
There is a stability factor that's been put into place so that that is done over time.
Any other questions on federal programs?
All right.
And I would just note, as you all are aware, these, these numbers will change as we get awards for the federal programs. So, they may be slightly different when we bring it back on the 25th and present before, before you vote.
I just noticed, you know, I've got my head so far in this ESA bill. With what the Senate just moved forward in the Senate Education Committee, the total value of our annual federal funding, by the time the program, the ESA program reaches max capacity, we easily could be spending more than this out of Hamilton County Department of Education budget on private school tuition.
Great point.
Mr. Smith, did you have something?
Yeah, Dr. Edwards, on the, on the 21st century learning programs, do, do we run those programs, or do we contract for somebody to do those?
I have Preston Gunter here, but I'm certain that what's in this document are the ones that are the district sponsor.
Correct.
Yes.
We run those.
The ones that are in Hamilton County schools that are in school-based, we run those.
Okay.
Some faith-based, and other organizations go into the buildings, like the Urban, and some faith-based things, faith-based, for example, going to Hardy. But the ones that, I haven't seen this document, the ones that, that I facilitate, we run those from my office.
Okay, do they come out of this pocket of money, though?
The federal funds, the grant awards.
But there are other providers. So, this is the district provided that we get, but there are other providers. That is what Preston was making guess.
All right, so, the, the last budget is for the self-funded programs. That's on the third page of your packet. The only thing I would note, well, this is, the budget's approximately 6.6 million and includes funding for 117 positions. As with a couple of programs that moved out of federal, we had one that we are moving out of self-funded and GP, both revenue and expenses, again, to align with the state's reporting guidelines. So, there are three programs in total that we've had to move out of federal or self-funded, and we have to show in the GP budget for, for the reporting guidelines that they've, so they've asked us to do that, and we are doing that this year. There are no new programs in self-funded, same as last year. And that is really all I have on self-funded.
Is that budget the same as last year?
It's, it's close.
Can I, real quick question? I'm looking at the director's salary here, is that for the childcare?
Which one are you looking at? I'm sorry.
Looking down to the second, the, the, under, at the little block, right after the break, it says director.
Oh, that's, that one's child nutrition. Yeah.
Is that childcare, after-school childcare, or?
No, that's, that's child, that's, that's school nutrition. The first page is school nutrition. That's the director of our nutrition program.
Okay, so, that's, that 96, 995 is the director's salary?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's a, I'm just curious, what are, I'm sure she's well-qualified, what are her qualifications requirements on that?
I don't have qualifications with me. She, she runs the entire USDA food program for the school district.
She's got a big job, I know. I was just curious.
31 million.
Yeah, she's got, she's got a big job. Big job.
Mr. McLennan?
This is per Rhonda, she can't be here. If she, if you'll send her the breakdown of the 3 million for the school-age childcare, I think that goes back to conversations that we had at a board meeting. She-
We're back on the self, on the self-funded.
Self-funded, yeah, self-funded for school-age childcare, that 3 million. If you can have, send her the budget, or send all of us the budget. She just wanted to bring that up.
I'd like a copy of that, it's way off, I could, please.
I'll send, I'll send the actual detailed budget of that program to the board.
So, at the note below, are lunch monitors in this budget? There's a note in it. I saw, okay.
It's just the way, so, the positions, these are hard, these self-funded positions, some of them fund quarter positions, some of them are half a position. So, the note is to basically just explain that some of these are FTE equivalents, and some of them are actual number of employees.
Gotcha. Whether it goes here, whether it goes somewhere else, we need lunch monitors in our schools. I think Dr. Young at East Brainerd's going to run me out of town if I don't try to get her one. But I'm tired of going into buildings and having three teachers in the lunchroom, and they don't get to eat lunch because they're watching kids. And if we can't give them a 20 or 30-minute break, which I think it's actually in board policy that we are obligated to do, then we're letting them down, and it's just all-around bad situation for, for teachers to have to do that.
Thank you. And one thing I would note is, the staffing model that Dr. Edwards mentioned, we will be rolling clerical into that model as we develop the model. You know, and it will, so, schools will have a certain number of clerical positions, and then, you know, we can work with schools on how best to use those positions.
Anyone else?
What's photography in that, for 200,000? It's-
School photography. School, for school.
Yeah, for school photography.
Oh, for just pictures and stuff? Okay.
Okay. I think that's all we have.
Yeah, so, the, the last thing I have is just a reminder of the, the budget calendar. So, next Thursday before the regular board meeting, we have another budget work session. And then, we also have one scheduled for the work sessions on the 25th, May 2nd, and May 9th. So, I'll see y'all every Thursday for the next month.
I have a question.
Mr. Goldberg, go ahead. Ms. Jones?
Is, in May, board meeting is when? Is that the 9th, or is that just a work session?
So, yeah, May, we're asking for a special call on May 9th, because it would be the 25th for a voting session for votes, would be a special call. And then, the 23rd, and I think I touched on it a little bit about this a little bit, we, we ideally would keep the 23rd because operationally, that will put us in a position where May 9th would be, May 9th to the end of June would be a month and a half roughly, and there's so many requests for purchases and things that'll come through, in particular in operations and maintenance, that we didn't want to wait that long. So, we talked through all different options, really, and talked about May 9th being the board meeting for the month of May. And May 23rd, doing away with May 23rd, but then, as we talked through it operationally, it just wouldn't function. So, May 9th would be action specifically for the budget, and then, May 23rd would be a regular board meeting. And I think there's some, also some pregnancies.
I mean, I'm not trying to have my baby, man.
You may not throw.
You may not have control.
No, I would, we have to touch.
All right, so, is that it? Hey, I will say, Mr. McLennan, before I adjourn, you know, I was able to, I was able to secure a cafeteria monitor, so maybe we just need to go ahead and let East Brainerd come on back to District 7. All right. Many adjourn.